Okay. Good evening. The Charter Township of Plymouth Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, August 25th, 2020 will come to order. Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Trustee Heitman?
Here.
Trustee Dempsey?
Present.
Clerk Borva, here. Trustee Dorchevitz?
Here.
Trustee Kermey?
Here.
Trust- Treasurer Clinton?
Here.
Supervisor Heisey?
Here.
All present, we have-
Very good. Tonight's pledge of allegiance will be led by trustee Chuck Kermey.
Alleged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Chuck.
Item C is the approval of the agenda. Any comments or questions?
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Clerk?
I move for the approval of agenda for Tuesday, August 25th, 2020.
Motion is made by Clerk Borva, is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Dorchevitz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item D is approval of the consent agenda. Comments or questions by the board?
I have two. One amendment, Jerry, I think there's a typo on the amount. Added back in. It says 400,000, I think it was more like 110,000. Let's take a look at it.
Okay then. Noted.
We added back like 109 something.
It says we added back in 409. I don't think that was the case.
No. It's a typo. It's a typo.
It was something like 109, I think.
It was 109 and change. Ken, what's up? What do you got?
I don't have my ma- mic on.
Now I do. Okay.
Okay. Um, the other item is you clarify the, my comment, uh, was about the fire police department, taking a look at and benchmarking other departments on what they're disclosing in response to some of the attention on police departments of late. So this was a little confusing here where it says trustee asked, trustee Kermey asked that something be posted regarding benchmarks made.
Yeah.
So we need to clarify that.
Sure. Okay, uh, anything?
Well, you know, I, uh-
Did you have anything under bills?
Oh, yeah, bills, well, I think, well, I already mentioned it. The bills I reviewed, everybody answered, but we only have one item on the crossing guard question because March through June, we wouldn't have any expenses. So I don't know whether it's been adjusted. So somebody just take a look at it.
We'll, uh, we'll take top, Chief, do you know anything about that one? Is that something that you guys handle? Crossing guards?
It, it was a $9,000 bill.
I think we continued to pay it just in case, but, um-
I don't know if they were paying.
If they were paid at all or laid off or anything like that, we, maybe we could get reimbursed. Anything else under item D?
Um, yeah, you know, I'd be remiss in, uh, in not bringing up the mutual aid given for the fire once again to our neighbors to the south. We, we receive a hell of a lot more than we give and it seems like it's pretty standard and, and, you know, the chief was gonna look into it, but, uh-
You mean the opposite, we give a lot more than we receive.
Right, right, yeah. But, uh, and we look at where these are and they're a long way from Plymouth. And, and that, that's kind of disconcerting as well as we go a long way out of the way so we, we don't have our guys sitting here for us, so. You know, I like to bring it up and, uh, once again, I'll, I did that, so thank you.
Okay. Anything else under item D? Uh, I need a motion to approve.
Mr. Supervisor, I move we approve the consent agenda for Tuesday, August 25th.
Motion is made by trustee Heitman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Borva. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Next is item E, this is public comment. This is not your only opportunity during the evening for public comment. We will have another, uh, opportunity at the end of the meeting and we also encourage public comments on individual agenda items as long as they are germane to that particular item. So at this point, item E, public comment, anybody interested? Mr. Stewart?
Wasn't going to, uh, John Stewart, uh, 1495 Maplewood. A week ago on, and a half ago, August 15th, I did something that the governor did on live TV today statewide.
Dr. Fisher.
Had a back flu vaccine shot, had the higher dosage because I'm over 65 years old and I have also want to inform the public that this flu vaccine that is currently available is good for a good 12 months. It is not like previous year's vaccines only good for six or seven months. So I have a good reason to argue with my wife who likes to wait to get her flu shot September, October, November because she thinks it'll last for only six months. That's not the case. The pharmacists and the doctors will tell you this is a 12-month flu shot. Thank you so much.
She, she's a lot younger than you though, so she probably wouldn't get the- I, I was just wondering.
And the township does offer, uh, flu shots to all of our employees for, for free. Uh, we will be doing that again this year for at least the fourth year in a row, uh, probably in late September, early October. But we were also told that it's a, it's a, like a good one-year dose for effectiveness. All right, anybody else? Very good then. We're gonna move on to item F. This is item F1, the Margate Cluster Housing Option. And we have Laura Haw here tonight, who is our planner, and we do have a representative from Margate.
Evening trustees. The, um, application before you is for a cluster housing residential option, also known as Margate, um, for the property at 9295 Canton Center Road. And the property is approximately just over 10 and a half acres and 30 detached single-family homes are proposed for the neighborhood. As you'll recall, a single-family cluster housing option is a flexible development method that is permitted, um, in certain residential districts in the township that provide for open space and/or other community benefits. Per the zoning ordinance, this site is considered an eligible property for the cluster housing option and under the cluster housing option, 32 dwelling units is the maximum that is permitted for this development. 30 is being requested by the applicant. The first step in the cluster housing option process is for the planning commission to review the proposal, hold a public hearing, and then make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees. That public hearing was held at the Planning Commission's July 15th meeting. There were several comments made by the public. And there was concern regarding the removal of the, um, the, the woods and trees, um, behind the subdivision that is located directly to the south. And then there were also concerns about how drainage from this project would affect neighboring drainage to residential properties. Um, I'd like to note that the applicant has conducted several meetings, um, with the adjacent property owners before and after, um, the COVID hit and, uh, the applicant can speak to those meetings in a, in a bit greater detail. And after reviewing the proposed development in July, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the cluster housing option with conditions based on several findings of fact which are outlined on page two of the cover memo. Uh, I'd like to just specify that this, uh, housing product for this development is geared towards, um, families and, um, this is important especially since this site is located within walking distance of two of the public schools. Since 2017, uh, this is the first housing development that's been proposed that isn't geared towards empty nesters. So this is trying to attract a different demographic to the community, which is an important, um, uh, component of, um, the objectives of the master plan. The recommendation, uh, this evening, pending any other, um, comments by the board and the public, is that the Board of Trustees approve the cluster housing option for this development. This option will not, um, is, approval this evening is only one more step in the process. From this point, then the applicant would go before the Planning Commission for site plan, uh, review and approval, and then eventually back to the Board of Trustees for your ultimate approval. So this is really just dealing with the density, the general layout, um, and we're not getting into the very, you know, nitty-gritty of the site plan in terms of the architecture. Thank you.
Have you received any other feedback from the public, either you or Jerry's office? Jerry, have you gotten any emails or anything from anybody on this? And then Bob, you were at the Planning Commission, so was there, that there were members of the public that were there? What was the general attitude?
Um, I, I thought that the, um, developer did a, uh, a good job, um, you know, working with the members of the public and I think they had a number, I think they had a number of meetings, did they, did they not?
Correct.
So there were a few concerns, but they were alight.
How many feet between the structures? It's just because it, the drawing makes them look extremely close.
The, the minimum distance between, um, the building envelopes, um, per the ordinance, the minimum is 10 feet and I believe that the minimum is at least 16.
Between the building or the, the lot? The walls of the building side yard is 16 feet? 11 to 14? All right. The masonry, are, we're requiring masonry, like, isn't the style of home changing somewhat where people don't want masonry homes? And are we locking into a style that, or maybe this is none of our business. If it's none of our business, that's great, but, uh, it appears that we're making comments on how much masonry. So I thought that maybe it's that one of the requirements is still being enforced in the ordinance.
Correct. So currently in the zoning ordinance, there's a 40% masonry coverage for residential units that are under a cluster housing. And that standard has been, um, held in the, the development projects that you've seen over the past couple of years. I think there is some truth to that building materials are changing, um, but the ordinance right now requires that 40%.
Well, does a developer want to consider making a change or you don't care? Your marketing plan doesn't, it's not affected. Should we do something different when we rewrite it? We're rewriting the ordinance now, aren't we doing some update of our master plan?
We're updating the master plan right now, correct, and then a couple of select ordinance amendments.
But the master plan is for land use, it's not for-
Right.
Building style or architecture.
That right? So it doesn't affect the architecture?
No.
We haven't discussed that.
All right. Laura, the only access would be off of Canton Center, correct?
Correct, um, although the applicant does propose a stub street.
A sub, what was that, a substrate?
Stub street.
Stub.
So that should the property to the south be developed in the future, it could be connected into more of a traditional neighborhood grid.
Okay.
Where would that be? Here?
Yeah. Because right now you've got the old, uh, farm-
Right.
-plan, uh, the pumpkin patch guy.
Correct.
So Laura, I, when I was looking at this, that's a great picture, if you could leave that one right there, Bob. So when I was looking at this picture and then the agenda item that's next for the Andover ponds, I had the same question in my mind as I'm not, you have to refresh my memory on what makes this a cluster housing option. In other words, are just stand, if this was not a cluster housing option and this was just a standard development, what rules would we be breaking or ordinance would we be breaking on this picture? Are they, are the, are the, the buildings too close together? Are they too close to the street? Is the density too high? What, what rules are we breaking that we have to go to the cluster housing option?
Right, so the configuration of this would likely be different if it was just under traditional subdivision design and we would have, uh, fewer units and there would be some additional, like a rear yard setback, some additional feet in all the rear yards, for instance. Conversely though, without a, um, cluster housing option, uh, there's no requirement for the street trees, any of the other landscaping, um, any connections, sidewalk extensions that are provided on the property or outside or, uh, control over the architecture.
What exactly at the top of the picture that? That, what is that?
That's the detention basin that is required by Wayne County. And then, uh, there's a, the green belt along the northern property. That is, um, will be deeded to, deed restricted to the church to remain as open space.
Okay.
Where's the church located and where's?
Right here.
That's like the parking lot?
This is the, uh, the baseball field right here.
Church is not even on the map.
No, the church is right about here.
Yeah.
In front of the baseball field.
No, that's, that's a, that's a little subdivision there, it's a little-
Oh, I'm sorry, I stand corrected.
Yeah, just to the west of that.
Right, boom.
So, just for clarification then, where it says Church of the Nazarene, is that the church's property?
Yes, it is, and that's their ball fields and then just to the north, uh, you would see the church and their parking lot.
I think that's their parking lot, that's the beginning of the parking lot there. That's a ball field, so it's even, not even off the map.
So getting back, Laura, what the things that make cluster housing options unique is, and I'm trying to recall the definition of them, but the other ones that we've seen in the past have gazebos. You know, they have walking trails, they have benches, they have, I'm not seeing a lot that's unique in here and it's, it's with the, the exception of the catch basin. It's just seems like the houses are just more dense and we're trying to pass an option to be able to put more houses on a smaller footprint.
So in terms of, I think, this does vary from the other developments that we've seen in the past couple of years in terms of like that central gazebo. The benefit that the applicant is proposing with this project is that there will be a connection, um, to the west that would link to Pioneer. And then on Canton Center, um, the applicant has stated that there is interest in working with the school district in which we've had a preliminary meeting, um, so far, uh, to discuss sidewalks and, um, improving that connection for future residents and children that would be in this area. I forgot to mention that as part of a cluster housing development, the township also has control on the removal of woodlands and the replacement. So if this were under regular traditional subdivision design, there would be no replacement needed. Those trees could be removed today and not replaced. With this project, the applicant, um, is required to replace those trees onsite or offsite and one of the recommendations of the Planning Commission was to, um, increase that tree replacement by 50%.
You mean that's a voluntary thing? To increase the tree replacement by 50%?
So speaking of the trees, on this, um, plan, I, I don't see any of the existing so-called perimeter trees that are referred to on page 93 of the packet. It says, "Efforts will be made to preserve as many perimeter trees as feasible." So are those shown on that plan, the perimeter trees?
I'm not sure if the, the trees that are to be, um, kept are shown on the concept plan. The applicant did provide, um, with their Planning Commission submission, a rather detailed woodland study and also wetland study, um, by Atwell Hicks. And so if they're not on the concept plan, then they are in other documentation.
So, that's, that's something interesting to me about these two packages, these two agenda items. We have this rather, um, detailed, colored, full-scale, full-size, I should say, attachment. And this, we have this and one color schematic, I guess. Why, why the difference in the two?
Well, the applicant does have some additional, um, like materials to hand out tonight, um, for the board's consideration. But this project is at, I think this is the, the differentiator. This project is at a very initial stage, whereas the Ponds of Andover, the cluster housing that we're gonna be discussing next, that is at its very final approval. So it's already gone through, um, it, this board has reviewed that project before, it's at its final stage, it's all buttoned up, um, and that concept is solidified. Where this, there's still, there's gonna be changes and massages to it.
Okay, that's a good point. So when I read the actual action item, if I can go back to that, we're, we're asked to give approval in the resolution for the Margate Residential Subdivision with the conditions.
Yes, for the option only.
Option only.
At that point then, um, pending approval from the board, then the applicant could go back to the Planning Commission, go through preliminary and final site plan, and then they would need to come back to this body once again for final approval. So there's still other steps in the process that have, you know-
So if I have major heartburn over this, what I reluctantly will call a tract housing look to this, there's an opportunity that could be improved through the process to have fewer homes with more distance between them and more amenities? As the treasurer pointed out, there are no amenities. Is that possible?
The amenities is, uh, something that is still being worked out and that will definitely need to be provided as part of this project. Regarding the density, um, historically, the township at this stage has, uh, either permitted or limited and given that direction back to the Planning Commission. So I think, um, an example would be, uh, Ponds of Andover. Originally, they requested, I think, nine homes and then through the Planning Commission, it went to eight and then the board said, uh, seven. And then that direction was given to the Planning Commission and that's where the site plan was fleshed out.
Thank you for your answers, appreciate it.
Laura, the, um, one thing that's going to come up in the future and it doesn't really impact the project right now is the fact that most of Canton Center Road is still a dirt road and it's one of the few dirt roads left in the township of that size. And, and while this development is going to be very close to Isbister Elementary and Pioneer Middle School, it's also very close to the high schools. And I, I, I can tell you from experience that you're gonna have a lot of people driving south on Canton Center now, all over Canton Center trying to get to this. And when construction work begins, traffic coming off of Joy, it's gonna kick up a lot of dust. All I'm just gonna say is that we're gonna have a renewed emphasis on, on getting that road, getting that road paved at some point. Don't know when that's gonna happen, don't know how, it's gonna be very expensive, I'm sure. Whether that's an SAD, whether that's something that the county would just do, uh, out of the goodness of their heart, I, I doubt. But, uh, anyway, Canton Center is going to be an issue, uh, in the future, so.
And we've already heard people asking for a light on Canton Center and An Arbor.
Oh, yeah, then you'll want a light on Canton Center and An Arbor Road as well.
So the paving ends right here? And the development will be-
Right.
Are you raising a house on Canton Center for entry? I'm sorry.
There's already a- The house has already been demolished.
Well, not by you, by somebody else? But it was removed for the purp, this purpose?
So, okay.
Will a developer be contributing anything to paving the road or a deceleration lane or anything like that?
Yeah. That would be a huge expense. I mean, we've, we've seen how expensive it is with, uh, Litchfield and General Drive and, I know General Drive is kind of an outlier, but if you, if Bob, if you just pull out a little bit more, that's a lot of dirt to cover from there to Joy Road. Keep going, there's more.
If I could mention more-
One idea would be to just pave it to the entrance of the development.
It is.
It is completely-
It is now, it pretty much ends in front of the school, so.
Yeah, the paving.
But all that southern, all that area between there and Joy Road is all dirt.
But no deceleration or anything like that?
That, that will be determined by Wayne County once they submit for permits. Uh, similar to Brona Park, they had to add the deceleration lane for their sub on Beck.
So since we have this overhead, um, Ms. Haw, the, um, what looks like not treat area south of this, is that a farm agricultural?
Yeah.
Piece of property?
Pumpkin farm.
I'm not sure how it's currently used.
It's a farm, it, it's a pumpkin farm, there's root, there's barnyard animals there, it's a farm, it's an old farm, still active. There's roosters, I can hear them in the morning.
Laura, the way this is, the way this is currently zoned, could you put, without the cluster housing option, could you put 30 homes on this footprint?
No, that is, that is the, the utilization of the cluster housing option.
How many could you put on there?
Um, there, there was a pa- parallel plan, 23 homes. So there's a, there's a, the seven homes is the differentiation between the gain of the cluster housing versus the other benefits that the township would, um, receive.
But if you go over there on Saddle Brook Court, I know that's, that's an o- uh, older subdivision, but those homes are also very close together, that's a clust, was that a, does anybody remember if that's a cluster housing option?
As a gazebo?
Site condos.
That was a site condo?
Yeah.
Yes.
That was a Robertson project?
Yeah, that's, that one's a very beautiful one and you see it has some kind of green space in the middle.
Yeah.
A boulevard, just like the development north of this proposal has a boulevard and it has a curved entry, kind of a, I don't know how you describe it, but it's not a straight road into that development, not, not this one, um, Bob, but over to the east, to the right.
Yeah, just north of us.
See how that road slightly curves coming in?
Yeah.
This road seems to be virtually straight, but doesn't seem to be the same.
It is.
Yeah, go ahead.
Could you come to the mic?
Yeah.
Straight and it's also, you can't really turn around.
Could I, uh, could you get closer to the mic? Sure, could I have a handout? Well, is that appropriate? Thank you.
Well, the development you're referring to that's across from, entrances across from Isbister, right? This is the one that has the gazebo.
Thank you.
I think they have an underground detention system that's not exposed.
Correct. I believe that's correct.
It was a huge project that created a lot of problems.
So I'm Tim Lockren, I'm the director of-
Pardon me?
Tim Lockren, the Director of Land Acquisition for Robertson Brothers Home, 6905 Telegraph Road. And i- if, if you're not too familiar with Robertson, we are a top-five home builder. We've been around 75 years, so, um, I, I would put our reputation up against anyone in the business and I, I truly mean that. We actually did build the, uh, Saddle Brook Community to the west, as you mentioned. That was actually a, uh, kind of a difficult time because I was in the middle of the Great Recession. We lost our equity, we were able to, uh, purchase it back and finish it up and I think it's a beautiful, um, subdivision. That's, that just kind of shows, uh, who we are as a company. Again, we're here to, to talk about what we think is a very exciting community. It, it's something that I think is a housing type that, that Plymouth really could use. Just to address, before I go on a little bit more, just to address the, uh, the, I guess if you call the, the tract housing or the, the, uh, the straight roads, if you will, what we really concentrated on was protecting the neighbors. So by putting that road where it's at, we're able to give as much, um, setback from the neighbors to the south as possible. We found that that was really something we heard a lot from the neighbors, so that is something very specific to us. If we were able, if we did what you see to the, um, neighborhood to the north, which by the way is very, very, um, small setbacks, they're very tight on those, um, on that site, they have much, um, higher density than we do. If you look at that and they put that, uh, park, if you will, in the middle of it, that just pushes all the homes to the neighbors, um, on the sides and we were really trying to avoid that. So that's just a little bit of a impetus of why we, we decided to go with this, uh, this type of plan. As far as the density, I'm sorry, as far as the, uh, the plan itself, um, you know, we feel that just having it as a straight-up, our 1S project really doesn't get to, um, utilize the site because it really isn't efficient, inefficient design. If you can see it's coming in, um, off of the street and it's a very, I would say, um, irregular sized, I'm sorry, this is me. Irregular sized.
You're getting a lot of email.
I'm sorry?
You're getting a lot of email.
You know, I, I, I have it on silent for everybody but my wife, so that was my wife, so, sorry about that. But yeah, so it's a very irregular site, um, it's a very inefficient way to put in single-family homes on this particular configuration. We are purchasing the site from the, uh, Church of the Nazarene, as you can see, uh, just to the north of us. This is a, um, basically separate parcel that they have in, in, in the rear of the property. So it really doesn't lend itself to having a, a traditional type of subdivision where you can really get, you know, maximize it. It's not square, if you will, it's not something that, that you can really get efficiency. So that, that kind of explains, I think, a little bit of, as to how we developed it the way we did. We've had a lot of conversations with the neighbors, we had a, a, a meeting at the, the church, uh, right before COVID. We decided we were gonna have another meeting shortly thereafter and of course, all of that happened, so we had, did it by Zoom. and of course, all of that happened, so we did it by Zoom. And I think we got really good feedback. A lot of what I'm mentioning here on the south, that was, and I know Laura brought it up, we're open to having as much buffer as we can. Again, we've got, I think, 144-foot-deep lots on the south. That's a fairly deep lot, and we did that specifically so we can provide that buffer. If the trees, you know, stay, I'm happy to have conversations with the neighbors about keeping the trees. Now, mind you, we have to meet all engineering standards, so we have to drain that area. And so you've got some of the neighbors saying, we want the trees to remain. You've got some of the neighbors saying, we want the drainage taken care of. We can't do everything. We're going to do the absolute best we can to meet all engineering standards. We're going to make it better than it is. Now, we can leave the trees, but I think you'll have, I think you'll have drainage issues if we do it that way. So we're open if it's, you know, putting in new trees because we have to put in rear storm. We're open to that, too. We're open to working with the neighbors as we move forward. I know I'm speaking quite a bit here. One of the things that we did think was a very high, high-use amenity is the connection to the schools. We heard that a lot, providing connection between the two schools. And we are willing to work with the school district and Wayne County on the crossing, if you will, how that would play out. So that is something that we're going above and beyond with. And we are replacing not only all the replacement trees that are required, we will meet the 50% additional that was recommended. We have some room around the retention pond, and we could even probably put some more buffer trees using those trees. It's about 37 additional trees, I believe. So again, the proposed density is less than what it is to the north of us. I think we're a very good transition from, you've got basically across Canton Center Drive, you have some pretty high density as you get closer to us. The project to the north of us, I think I calculated was somewhere around three and a half to 40 units per acre. We're at three units per acre, actually less than three units per acre. So I think we're a very good transition. And again, we're trying to buffer as much as possible to our neighbors and provide that stub street for future connection. I'd love to buy that farm. It's not for sale. So we've had a lot of conversations.
So the farm is down here, I'm using my pointer now. So the farm is down here, and this is where your road will just be bulkheaded at this point?
Correct, yeah.
Right over here, there's a, this is a path
Yes.
that the kids take to walk from the neighborhoods
Right.
into Pioneer. So, you know, just be aware that you're going to have to connect up with that somehow, otherwise you're going to have people.
Agreed. If you go back to the plan, we're connecting to that, to drive through. So we find that that's a good
Oh, right there? Okay, okay.
Just to speak to the architecture, too, we are redesigning a whole plan set specifically for this site. We're very excited about it. And as far as the elevations, it's an interesting conversation because we've had a lot of conversations about your ordinance. The cluster ordinance requires, I think it's 40% masonry, and it doesn't really talk to hardy or anything like that. It just, I think it's just brick and stone. We built a lot of product with hardy. In fact, we're building a project in a nearby community, and we hope that we could insert that same product. It's a ranch. So we have ranches and colonials here. You're free to look at it. I think it's beautiful. There's a lot of hardy. There's probably not 40% masonry, but it's mostly hardy and a little bit of stone and brick, and it looks beautiful. So we'd love to have that conversation. We'll meet any ordinance you have as far as, you want to see brick, we'll do brick. But from our standpoint, I think you had mentioned it, there are other opportunities, other things that other communities allow as well, which is just as good as brick.
Well, hardy is a form of masonry. It's made out of cement.
Yes. My understanding was that didn't count towards the 40%, but if it does, then, you know, we could do a lot of good things with elevation.
It just looks like wood, but it's made out of cement.
Right, exactly.
So if I could, if I could ask some questions, yeah, no knock on Robertson Brothers because your Saddle Brook development is really nice. And I think that's part of why, when I came to this, I was a bit surprised because you do have that green space in the middle there, just as Village Manor does, I guess that's the name of that development. And also Stonehenge has, Stone Hedge, east of Canton Center, has more space in it. So why didn't you use this green space that you're, that's the top of your design here on the site context?
Yeah, that's a good question. So those communities that you mentioned are more age-targeted type of communities where they have general common open element space. When we build single-family, traditionally, they want them in the yard. They want the space in the yard. So we're just, we're trying to react to the type of buyer that will be here compared to the projects you just mentioned. Specifically, in going to the north, that's land that the Church of the Nazarene wants to remain. Our plan is to deed that back to them so they continue, they can continue to use that as an open space area.
I'm sorry, the green?
The gray dotted line.
Yeah, I'm not
No, 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 no. The green area shown on this, that will be, that will be deeded back to the Church of the Nazarene.
Why is that?
That area, correct, right there.
So that means they have to maintain it?
Our HOA through the master deed would be responsible for maintaining it.
Okay, but let me try to understand.
Yep.
Why would you do that?
They were allowed to sell 10 acres of land, and we could go in and develop that entire portion. In fact, the 23 units in the parallel plan that we mentioned before actually does not include that land back there. I've not done a parallel plan that shows that, but what we're proposing to do is not develop that area, just deed it back to the church, and they can have that for open space.
But they already have open space?
Correct.
So the 10.5 acres includes that land that's being deeded back?
Correct.
That doesn't make any sense to me. You could use that as part of this development.
Well, again, the church was very specific. They did not want any homes closer than what we're providing. They are the seller of the property. They were adamant about that.
Is that a condition of the sale?
It is, most definitely, yes.
Okay. Well, then the other thing you said is you worked with the neighbors, and I appreciate that a lot.
Yeah, good.
But the only neighbors really on the north are now next to the detention pond.
Yes.
And on the south, you have half a dozen homes.
Correct.
So I still don't understand why that doesn't suggest you could change the plan to have fewer homes with a little bit more space between them.
I'm glad you brought up the space in between. So most of the lots are around 56 to 64 feet in width. There are a few that are at the entrance, just because of configuration, that I think are about 54. So when you see the design, if you go back to that one, it does look like these are bigger footprints. Our homes are going to be about 38 to 40 feet in width, and our home lots are mostly 56 to 64. So it's not, they're not going to be crammed in like it looks on that, and I could certainly revise that to show the actual width of our homes. But you'll have, in general speaking, you'll have 16 to 18 feet between units.
I thought you said 11 to 14.
That is what the minimum is, yes, because of the smaller lots as you come in. So if you can see, one through six, just because of the configuration, they're a little bit narrower. So that's kind of driving the setbacks that I had mentioned earlier. Generally speaking, particularly the ones that are, you know, on the western portion next to the residents there, they will have, you know, like I said, 16 to 18 feet between the homes, which is, by the way, pretty typical of the neighborhood to the south.
Okay. Any other questions by the board? Anybody in the public? No? Okay, then we are going to look for a motion on this item.
Mr. Supervisor.
Yeah.
I move to adopt resolution 2020-08-25-75, authorizing the approval of the Margate Cluster Housing Option with conditions as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Motion's made by Clerk Vorva. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Heitman. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Treasurer Clinton.
I'm voting no. I'm not opposed to the development, but I just think that we're stretching the definition of clustering housing option, cluster housing option here to get more houses in a smaller footprint. So I'm not opposed to the development, but I am opposed to the cluster housing option.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey.
No.
Trustee Dorshavitz.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All righty. Thank you very much. Good luck. Keep us posted. All right. At this time, the applicants for the ponds of Andover are waiting out in the hallway. They're going to get set up. We just wanted to try to limit the number of people in the room here tonight. Are you with one of the, you're with Patrick, okay. So then we'll need your name for the record when you're ready. And just come up to the microphone here and make sure that it's working. Bob, do we have their drawings on our screen as well? I think we do. I think it's in the, I think they're in the agenda pack.
Right.
Well, Laura, do you want to, Laura, why don't you start us off first? Let's have Laura, our planner, start us off, and then we'll, and then we'll listen to the applicant. But yeah, we've got all of your drawings up on our screen here.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Heisey. This application is another cluster housing residential development, but as we just discussed, this is at its final stage. So it has received option approval back in 2018 for seven units. The Planning Commission has reviewed the tentative and final development plan. There were several outstanding items with the Planning Commission's recommendation for final approval, which have since been addressed by the applicant. After securing approval tonight and recording their legal documents, the applicant can begin working with the Building Department on permits. So this is the final step. The township attorney, Mr. Bennett, has reviewed the legal documents, and final approval is contingent on his satisfaction of the legal documents for compliance. There is a recommended motion and resolution in your packet, which also notes the contingency on associated legal documents being addressed to Mr. Bennett.
Okay, any questions for Laura? All right, then let's have the applicant. We have one in the back. I Go ahead. Chuck?
No, let's just wait till she, the applicant talks.
Okay. Again, we'll just need your name and who you represent.
Yes, sir. My name is Michelle Spencer. I am with Powell Engineering. I am here on behalf of Trowbridge Companies. They have been working very closely with Laura. They have secured in Michigan Eagle permits for all wetland work. There's very little wetland work, but are discharged into the wetland. So we have that permit already. We gave them some mitigation even when we didn't have to, just to show that we are good stewards. So we have also worked with Wayne County Drain Commissioner extensively to get all of the stormwater requirements set in course. The site development has really worked, we worked very closely with Laura for a while. There was a lot of back and forth with the Planning Department. We were able to get seven residences, which meet code in the cluster housing, and provide park space as well. We have a very nice pathway that goes all the way up the west side of the site, up around the detention pond that will be treated, and back out to the street as well.
It's this brown, this brown path here?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And there will also be benches along the way for people to sit and just enjoy the wetland view.
So what's this area here? Do you own this, or is this?
That is owned property. That is just park space. So it gives people the opportunity to just be out there. We're not clearing trees. We're just clearing enough to make a pathway through it, and it's going to stay vegetative.
Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Kermy?
Yes. See, these are much farther apart. That or the scale's different than the previous one, so that's good. I have a question about, well, the buildings. You're not the person to ask for, you have a split-level design here. Please give me the marketing rationale and, about why you're doing split levels.
Okay, so hold on, we've got multiple people. Come on. If you want to comment on that, we just need your name for the record.
My name's Anthony Randazzo. I'm the developer builder. We've been in your beautiful city for over 30 years. I'm happy to comment on the split level. Our marketing analysis has led us to believe that there's a big demand for people in my age group, namely first-floor master bedrooms, because there's not just much of it. You know, we've been building colonials for the past 45 years, and there's just a need, need for it. So that's the purpose of it. We do pride ourselves on elevations and doing a nicer job. My career was spent mostly in quaint communities like Birmingham, Bloomfield, Plymouth, and I just like that niche kind of product. So that's the logic behind it.
So the steps are not going to be something that'll scare away people who want a first-floor master because of safety of negotiating steps?
Steps being where?
Well, with a split level, don't you always have to go up or down?
Well, you have a bedroom on the first floor, so it's kind of a transitional home in that, you know, you might be, you might have college students, you know, visiting, but really, it's like two homes. So you can shut off the upstairs and not use it, but you have the luxury of having that first-floor master bedroom. So it's the best of both. And then also, if you do a ranch, it takes up much more land, and it increases the cost exponentially. And the best way that I can describe that is if you had a 1,600-square-foot ranch, and I mean, this is, you know, over exaggeration, but if you had 20 by 80 by 20 by 80, you have 200 lineal feet as opposed to, if you had a colonial, it's 40, 40, 40, and 40, it's 160. So everything is cheaper. But I think this is a wave of the future. I really do. I'm really excited about doing it.
Good. Are you the, are you the same Randazzo that has done other developments in Plymouth Township?
Yeah, we did Andover. We did, my memory's terrible, Huntington Park. We've done a bunch of stuff.
Okay, in that vein, we've had some issues working with you. What do we need to do different this time to not have all of the high-maintenance work associated with your developments that we've had in the past? What should we do different, maybe what you should do different?
Actually, I worked with Mark Lewis, and he had asked me to take care of some underground development that I, because I had sold it to a builder, which was not me. We did the development. So we're going to be handling this one exclusively ourselves.
Is that the issues you're referring to?
No, there was some years ago also. There seems to be a little more work with your company than normal, so we want to avoid that. Let's just, let's be efficient.
We did go through a difficult time, and the builder there, I think, did a reasonably good job. I can't speak for him, but we did the development.
All right.
We sold it off.
I think you've been impacted by the recession as well, and COVID and other curveballs that you've had.
And we stayed in business, and we're proud of it. It was hard, you know? So, any more questions?
Yes, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like you're keeping a fair amount of the trees and shrubs that are there on the property now.
Absolutely. The other thing I'd like to point out, somebody had supposedly commented about this area over here, we did have another lot, and we were convinced it was best to not have it and keep it as a open space. So we were sensitive to that.
And then on this plan that's shown on the screen, you have a tremendous amount of plantings along North Territorial. Is that?
Because you have to screen it, and I think it gives it its own personal on-quiet, you know? Because you do have two houses at front on it, which isn't ideal, although we put the driveway there to push the residents further in.
And then there's no safety issues with the turning radius of the circle for fire trucks?
No, not at all. All that's been taken care of.
Yeah, this one's, in my humble opinion, far superior to the last one, which I still think has major issues.
We agree. Thank you. And it's been a process, as you know, and it's, we're looking forward to building it.
Okay. Any other questions? Anybody else? Okay. Anybody in the public on this one? Okay. Anybody else from the board? Then I'll entertain a motion. If not, Mr. Heitman? If not, Mr. Heitman? Motion's made by Trustee Heitman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by...
May I inject one more question? It has to do with the condo agreements and the storm sewer. Are we absolutely sure it's the right way to avoid the problem with the township having to manage the, uh, storm sewer in the future? When I say manage, rebuild it?
I have not seen a storm during agreement for this project, however, we do have a new template where it puts upon the, uh, developer and the developers' S and E's the responsibility for such maintenance and repair.
So that is in here? There is some mention of that, but this is not where that gets taken care of?
Correct.
We're gonna get another crack at it?
Yeah, you're gonna get a crack.
All right, good. All right. So I don't wanna miss that so that we have a problem twenty-five years from now.
So the motion was made by Trustee Heitman and seconded by Clerk Vorba. Um, Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Dorchavitz.
Yeah.
Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Heitman. Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you very, thank you very much.
Okay, Laura, if you could grab Mr. Fellerath outside. He's, uh, conferring with his... We don't know who he's conferring with, but, uh, they're, they're being very COVID compliant. They're, uh, staying out of the room here so we can keep our numbers down. And here he is. Okay. So we're gonna pick up again with, uh, item F3. This is the 2020 sanitary sewer rehabilitation program contract award. Mr. Fellerath, you've got the next several items along with Jeremy, so I'm gonna leave it up to you two as to who wants to talk to these items, but we'll start with, um, with item F3.
Okay, good evening. Um, I think I'll start, then I'll hand it over to Jeremy. So the first item is the 2020 sanitary sewer rehabilitation program. This is the, uh, this primarily is a lining program where we line our sanitary sewers. If you recall, um, as part of that, uh, two-year SOL grant, we identified those sewers that are in the worst condition in the township that needed to be rehabilitated. And this is the first year of, uh, of the capital improvement program where we have several locations, approximately six of them, where we need to line the interior of the sanitary sewer system. We did a project like this, uh, back in 2008. And that's the last time we ever did a rehab program for our sanitary sewers. Having said that, it's, it's, uh, it's primarily cured and placed pipe, which is just another name for aligning. Um, we went out to bid. Um, unfortunately, we just received one bid. And, um, however, um, the good news is it's from Inland Waters. They're, uh, I know of them. They've, they've done work for the communities. They, they've, they've worked on Wituah projects, for example, so this is the kind of work they do. Um, they're reputable. And from my discussion with Jeremy, and this is where I'll hand it out, over to our consultant because he indicated that the prices were reasonable, within the reasonable range. Um, so having said that, um, if, if the board agrees, I would like to proceed to get these done now because there's another batch of projects for next year and, um, these are relatively straightforward lining projects. So Jeremy, um, perhaps you wanna comment on the bids and the reason you think why we got one bid?
Sure, absolutely, yeah. So we got, we got one bid. We called three other contractors and the indication we got is everyone's busy and they, they don't need the work. Inland Waters, we have worked with in the past. We went back and looked at some of our old, uh, lining projects and the prices are reasonable by foot for what we would've seen from any other project.
What percent difference are they?
Uh, it's different than the previous year's project.
Yes.
Uh, it depends on the area and the type, but, I mean, anywhere from five percent to, you know, up to twelve percent. And this is from previous year's programs. For this year's programs, they're pretty in line.
Inland Waters is a very reputable company. I've done business with them in the past when I was at the county and they, they're, they're good at what they do. Th- this is basically like in, I know In Situ Form is a brand name basically, but it's the same concept, right?
Correct.
And, yeah.
Yes.
And I assume it's, I assume it's all budgeted already?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which two are, which two areas are the first priority?
Well, they're all rated, um, priority category five, which is...
All right, where are they?
Um, we have, uh, segments along Northville Road, the older part of, of the area. Um, and they're, and they're a bit oversized. They're, they're larger than a twelve inch diameter sewer too that are in bad condition. So we have them on, uh, uh, Northville, uh, General Drive, that gravel road, um, Joy Road. We have an oversized sewer there.
Bradbury and Riverside.
Bradbury condominium, Riverside. We've got some segments. These are sewer segments, um, again, a bit oversized, but in very bad poor condition.
They're, they're twelve, fifteen, eighteen and twenty-four inch.
Which is large for us, for the township.
So the surface, the surface is pretty worn is what you're saying?
The interior...
Yeah, the interior surface is worn, but they're not perforated.
Yeah, they could, they could have holes, breaks, corrosion.
Root balls, et cetera.
Pardon?
Uh, root balls, et cetera, coming in through the joints.
Yeah, to be a high ca, category, um, you gotta have cracks and breaks and severe corrosion, um, or bends in the sewer, bellies, um, something structural is deficient that needs to be...
You will dig up the bellies then? Or you're going to line the bellies anyway? Leave the bellies in them?
Um, I believe the bellies you have to dig up.
Yeah, we have one section in here that's a full reconstruction on General Drive, but the remainder are lining and those are in okay shape from a flow perspective. It's just, uh, from a structural perspective, they need some help and that's what the lining is for.
You have to dig up the what?
A, it's a slump.
Yeah, if there is a belly.
A belly?
So it's holding water.
So you said this is within the budget? This is budgeted?
This is budgeted. I, I think we're good on the budget. Jeremy looked at it and...
We are, yeah. We're within, we're then, within range of the original budget.
So you think this is a good value for the money with just one bidder? That's what I'm trying to get some assurance. It makes me nervous when you only have one bidder.
Well, they didn't know that when they bid.
Uh, well, the industry's not big. They're not that stupid. They know who's bidding what. It's a pretty small group.
I don't think so. That's collusion.
Uh, In Situ Form was going to bid up into the last minute, uh, and then their subcontractor who they needed pulled out, so that's the reason why we only got the one bid. So if, if they were talking to industry, they would've thought that In Situ would've gone after it.
Chuck, as you re, as you recall, this was part of a two-year grant that we got that analyzed all of our sewer systems underground and put this rating in place, not only what the, the current, you know, the, the current state of the sewer line was, but also the impact of a failure. Um, so what's the probability of a failure? But also what would be the impact of that failure? You know, if it's near a hospital, near, uh, a senior living home or something like that. But this is a series of projects that are going to take place over the next ten years and cost anywhere between eight and nine million dollars. This is really year one of that ten-year project. I did go back and look at this particular component. The, the folks that put together the cost analysis, uh, estimated this would cost four hundred fifty thousand dollars, so this is slightly below what they estimated that it would cost. So me personally, I'm comfortable that, that we're getting value for the dollar.
When does the work start?
Uh, as soon as we're done with the contract award here, we'll go and, uh, award the contract to the contractor and get a schedule set up with them. The intent is to start at this fall.
You can do this all winter long, right?
Right.
So you're not weather restricted.
There's, uh, there's been discussion of, uh, some development up the General Drive area. Uh, if we do this now, is there anything we would have to redo? If we were gonna do the roads, put curbs, gutters? How would, I'd hate to do work and then have to redo it.
Well, I, I mean, Jeremy can comment, but I know that the sewers are well below the depth of the road.
Right, the sewers are well, well below. There's services to every lot so far. I mean, the only potential is if you had a lot split, but I think all of those lots are not splitable.
I suspect that if there is any major development south of, of that General Drive area, that that will discharge into Ann Arbor Road.
Okay.
I, I mean, that would be my non-engineering assumption.
I just know we're talking about it and I didn't wanna do work and then have to redo it.
Typically, the, the sewers are in the road right away. They're not under the road, but there are crossings and I think General Drive is an exception where it's under the road.
Okay, any other questions from the board or from the public? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Heitman.
I move to award the contract for sanitary sewer lining and reconstruction to Inland Water Pollution Control Inc. in the amount of four hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-five cents.
Motion's made by Trustee Heitman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorba. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Treasurer Clinton, yes. Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Dorchavitz.
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes. Okay, next.
Yes.
Hi, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is item F4, Country Acres Pump Station Improvements Contract Award.
So this, uh, this project is a little bit straightforward. Um, improvements are, are required for the, uh, the existing, uh, lift station, sanitary sewer lift station that the township owns. It's our, uh, only lift station that we have to maintain. It hasn't been rehabilitated, um, in a while. Um, I don't know when, if, if ever it was, but there's several major items that we have to take care of. Again, this was part of the grant project where we assessed it and it was assessed, uh, even more, uh, recently. So there's a roof replacement, um, uh, one of the three pumps need to be replaced, um, and there's miscellaneous, uh, driveways, uh, concrete drainage issues. Bypass pumping is a significant improvement that we need for this station. So again, we went out to bids and, and FDA reviewed and tabulated them. Do you have any comments?
No, we, we received six bids. The bids were kind of all over the place, but the low bidder was one of the two contractors to show up on site and they showed up with about seven people to run through the station and review everything that we had.
So Lee was one of those?
Lee was the contractor who showed up with seven individuals, yes.
Uh, since the driveway doesn't get used very much, is there a way that we can put it back to gravel so it drain, you don't have to worry about runoff or whatever? Just give me some thoughts on driveway, especially around, would you consider gravel or something other than putting all-new pavement in? Since it gets used very little.
Oh, the only comment I have, it's, it's used at least once a month.
Right, that's very little.
Right.
A lot of that gravel's gonna end up out in the street though.
Yeah, it, it, the, the unique thing about this station is it's in front of Country Acres subdivision and that, I think that's why you have that flat roof to cover the HVAC and make it look aesthetically pleasing to the high-end subdivision. So, um, I would hate to go back, um, change concrete to gravel just because of the potential neighbor complaints.
So you're taking out that, is that, that looks like asphalt. Are you taking that out?
No, yeah, we're, we're crushing and shaping that asphalt and paving over top of it. There's a bunch of drainage improvements that are happening around it. If you go out there during the rain, it just holds water pretty much all the way around the station. So we've got a extra catch basin out there and then some regrading on the pavement.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, just, I know, I heard what you said about, like, the bid numbers, but on this sheet, two are close to each other, two seventeen and two twenty-six, and Lee's is at one fifty-five. That's a huge difference, but the other two are close, so why?
It, uh, just, uh, we, we evaluated the bid, went through their references, uh, went through item by item with them and they're comfortable with the bid. They're comfortable that they can handle it at the hundred and fifty-four.
Okay, but when you look at the other bids, which are close together, they're in the ballpark. Why are they so far out of Lee's ballpark?
We had some that were even higher.
Right.
Yeah, look at the last guy. Four hundred, he's, he's three times higher than, than Lee.
Yeah, that's my question. That's, that's part of my question.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of factors go into it, uh, time of the year, availability of staff, availability of, uh, the various parts. Maybe they had the pump already. Uh, it's a pretty common pump. Um, a lot, a lot of things go into it.
You've looked at the work that Lee Industrial's done elsewhere?
We, we followed through on all of their references and all of the references were great. They asked great questions while they were out there and we think they can handle it.
Good job.
Where's their home office?
Well, we'll try to get that for you if we can.
Well, it should be on their letterhead or, or the, the quote or the bid.
Yeah, I'm just pulling it up right now.
Any other questions by the board while they're looking that up? Anybody in the audience?
Pontiac.
Pardon me?
It's, uh, Pontiac.
Pontiac, Michigan?
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions from the board? I'm looking for a motion then.
Mr. Supervisor. I move to award the contract for Country Acres Pump Station Improvements to Lee's Industrial Contracting in the amount of a hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Second. Motion's made by Trustee Heitman, seconded by Trustee Kermy. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Dorchavitz.
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item F5, uh, is the as-needed water repair services contract award. Mr. Fellerath?
Yes. So, the, the Public Works, uh, decided to go out for bid for as-needed emergency-type services, um, to assist us in, in work that, that we can't do, that we typically get a contractor to help out. Um, past pa, past practice has always been, for example, an emergency water main break that's beyond our capability, we would, uh, attempt to contact the local contractors and we, uh, preferably the ones that, that we've done work with in the past. And whoever is able to, uh, respond the earliest, the soonest, uh, we would get them and respond. And this approach, it's, it's not ideal, but it has worked effectively, both from a, a work and a cost perspective. We've always had contractor come jump on board and, and help us in the middle of the night or on a weekend. Um, it's worked out well. Recently, in the last couple of years, um, I've, I've noticed an uptick in number of breaks that are in locations where, um, we needed assistance, under, under major roads or under unstable soils. Um, and for the past couple of years, we've been using the, the age-old approach. We've got a contractor recently, a local contractor, Vittigary, and you may have seen the, the invoices coming through. Um, they do good work, um, but I got a little concerned because of the number of, uh, times we needed assistance and I wasn't comfortable with, with if I was getting the best price. So we decided to go out to bid. So this, this contract is, is a bit unique, um, from the township's perspective. We, we figured we would try it out. There's a performance criteria in the contract about response time. It's a unit bid, unit price bid. So, um, when we do have to call this contractor, you've gotta meet certain performance requirements and we know exactly what everything's gonna cost. Um, and we try to, we try to cover every scenario, scenario, uh, from the past that And we try to, we try to cover every scenario, scenario, uh, from the past that we can think of. So it's, it's a bit of a unique contract. We thought we would try it out. We went out to bid. And, and we have a recommendation based on the bid prices, um, tonight. And it's, um, it's largely based on cost. And we lean towards Superior, which is recommended, um, based on, really it's based on the cost. And of course, the follow-up references on Superior from, from our consultant.
So where's Superior physically located? Where's their yard?
Auburn Hills.
Auburn Hills. And Bidgeterre is in Plymouth Township?
Correct.
Oh, they're in the city of Plymouth.
All right, city of Plymouth that borders Plymouth Township.
Yes, yeah, and we have been using, um, Bidgare, Bidigere.
I don't know how to pronounce it.
But, um, and, and they've done an excellent job. Um, they're close. We hadn't had any issues with them. It's just that there are certain items in the bid that are, that are, that are.
They provide very detailed, I look at their invoices, they're very detailed, well-done.
No, there's, there's no complaint. Again, this is based on the bid prices.
Is there anything that will preclude you from using Bidgare if Superior can't arrive in time?
No, no, we, that's what we would likely do if they don't meet the performance requirement. We would probably request their assistance first.
But we run the risk at that time that they can charge us anything they want.
You always run that risk. And so far, it's worked out where we've had some honest contractors. But absolutely, you run that risk.
So if I understand what we're being asked to approve, it's a contract that would say if, to your contract, if we want to use Superior on a project, they will charge us these per-unit prices. We have no obligation to use them. But if we do use them, they have an obligation to only charge what, what they've specified. So it's kind of a...
And they have to respond within four hours in terms of emergency.
Respond by arriving on-site?
Correct. Mobilize on-site.
So it's a way of trying to curb potential out-of-control costs, but still give us some flexibility? I'm not, you didn't, we didn't rehearse this, I know, so.
No, no, you're absolutely right. It's, we figured we'd try it out.
So their yard and everything is in Auburn Hills? They don't have satellite locations?
Yeah, they, they have another yard, um, I don't know exactly where it's at, but he said it's relatively closer to here. They were the ones that, uh, provided, um, construction for Lakeview condos, SAD, and, and did a nice job at that.
Auburn Hills is a long way away, you know? Water main breaks never seem to happen, you know, under ideal conditions either, so.
With the sun.
Yeah, they, uh, they provided in the bid tab a response time, each of them did. And, um, Superior was two hours versus Bidigere was one hour. So very similar times. And then really the biggest difference, if you look at the example projects that we provided, was the water services are, are, if it, if a water service breaks, they need to repair something minor. Those are relatively close costs. It's really the main breaks. The main breaks were almost three times the cost for Bidigere versus Superior.
Which is really probably why we would want to use somebody like this for a huge break where we don't have the capacity in-house to do it. Is that right?
Absolutely, yeah. We, um, yeah, if you run a typical scenario, it's gonna end up, Bidgare is gonna be higher. It's just the way the numbers, you know, there's a couple of items in there. For, for example, item number 31, additional depth. You know, I know, I know a lot of our mains are gonna be more than six, seven feet deep. Not, not, um...
Like Jeremy said, you're, you're seven times the amount, six, seven times your amount.
Yeah, and see, that's, that's one of the items where I don't know why they're so much higher than everybody else. It, it impacts the typical scenario. And that's why, I, you know, I have nothing, no issues with, with Bidgare. They're excellent. They've always came through for us in the past. This comes down to really price. And, you know, assuming, uh, we've never done direct work with Superior. This is where I rely on our consultant.
We have some experience with the condominium fix, the spring, right?
Not necessarily the Public Works, but right, the township.
So it boils down to price and speed, basically? So speed is the X, the X-factor right now. We don't know.
Right, and they're, they're providing a bid and they're saying they can be here within, within two hours, so we gotta hold them to it.
Has the, who's reviewed the contract? Has Kevin reviewed it or no?
Uh, no.
So are we awarding the bid tonight and then we'll approve the contract later or is that the plan?
Well, we were hoping to award the contract. We can make a contingent upon attorney's review.
Well, we can put that in the motion.
SDA put together the bidding documents, which includes the standard contract for engineers.
Right.
It's the standard engineering.
It's the standard, yeah, there's nothing different than what we've done.
It's not like the land, for example, like our grass and weed cutting contract. That, that is, uh, that was tailor-made for us.
Right.
So, okay.
The payment terms are acceptable, right, but it's not, they, they don't want their money in two days or anything like that.
Exactly.
Normal billing cycle.
There's some reasonable requirements, you know, on a monthly basis or something like that.
Okay, any questions from the audience? Anybody else on the board? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Heitman.
I move to award the contract for emergency as-needed water main repair services to Superior Excavating Inc. based on their unit price bid submitted on June 25th, 2020. We want to say contingent on final approval of all legal documents by the township attorney.
I think that's fine.
Second.
Uh, motion's made by Trustee Heitman, seconded by Trustee Kermy. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Dorchavitz.
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item F6 is the Northville Road PRV replacement rehabilitation design phase. Patrick, again.
Yes, all right, um, and I also have Brad Schepler with me. Brad, if you wanna come up from HRC. So, um, if you recall back in April, um, I mentioned that the, uh, Northville Road PRV station, we have two pressure-reducing valves, two eight-inch pressure-reducing valves at that station that, uh, is a critical part of the water system. That and the Joy Road PRV basically feeds the entire eastern half Lake Point District of the township. And the, uh, two PRVs, um, um, have increasingly, um, been deteriorating to the fact, to the, to the extent where, um, they, they don't, they don't function. They don't do what we need them to do anymore. They, they can't achieve and sustain a constant pressure. So what happens, our, our crew has to go out there every day during summer when we needed to work the most because of pressures and because of our requirements on GLWA to constantly adjust them, to constantly blow out the valves. They are 60-year-old valves. They're Golden Anderson valves, um, um, that are 60 years old. They're well beyond any design life that you would ever assign a valve. They work well, but, but really over the past few years, they've been nothing but, but trouble. So we had, uh, so hired HRC, uh, to, we, we hired them to, um, go do an assessment. At first, they did assessment of replacing the valves and that was the original intent, uh, when we, um, originally came up with the project. But since then and in April, it only made sense to them to come back and assess the entire facility since we're gonna do the facility. And there was also questions that we needed answered before we can actually, uh, come up with a scope of work. For example, we had to figure out how to, how to replace the valves and do a constructability. Are we gonna take down the, the station or can we put in new valves? And also, the valves that are in place that we use are no longer, they're no longer the, the valves in the water sector anymore. Um, they have a new, new technology. And they went from a piston-type, um, mechanism to a diaphragm, which are more efficient. So they're not even the most efficient type of valve that you want.
What did we, about s, maybe six or five or six years ago or so, we replaced? I thought we replaced these valves.
Yeah, yeah, when, uh, Dietrich Bailey.
Yeah.
About 10 years ago.
Was it that long?
Yeah. Uh, five-mile road.
Right.
Noticed that.
Different, this is a different location?
Yeah, they went with the, I, I think the rationale at that time was just to keep everything consistent.
Right.
But I don't think we can do that now and Brad can talk to that. We, we can't keep it consistent anymore. We can't just replace it with Golden Anderson. With Golden Anderson, for intents and purposes, we're not, we're not using that. So, so it, you know, so going back in April, we, we did that, we did an assessment of the entire station and then we had to do the constructibility and then we had to do, you know, since we're, we're leaning towards the newer technology, more efficient, smaller size, sized valve, we gotta get a handle on the flow and pressure from that system. That's why we had to do the additional study to set, to get the, the scope of work set up.
That was the $16,000.
That was the $16,000 and that was, it wasn't really contemplated at first, you know? First, we just wanted to replace the valves, but then we learned, well, you don't have these valves anymore. You got smaller valves, you got more efficient valves, you got diaphragm valves. And how are you gonna get the valves out? Because you gotta take down the station.
What did you decide on that?
What are the pressures, you know, so all this other stuff came up and then we figured, well, let's just do an assessment of the entire station. Maybe there's, I don't know. So we had to do all that after-the-fact assessment, which was part of the preliminary engineering that was approved in April.
So to remove the valves, have you decided whether you're going to take the building down and not replace it?
Yeah, and I'll have Brad, you know, we, we, we've looked into this, so Brad, why don't you mention that, what you're finding?
Okay, so we've met with a couple contractors that do this work that we've worked with and they said that the, the access, the size of the access hatch is sufficient to be able to remove everything, uh, from the facility as is. So no, there's no need to build a new access or anything like that.
Good.
They do, they, they did recommend that you definitely do a pre-bid meeting to show the contractors the space that they need to pull stuff out of, because it is more confined than normal. You have an access structure over the top of your, your hatch, which isn't normal. So they did recommend that, so the conclusion from that is no, we don't need to build another hatch. It's been more cost. So we're trying to, trying to make this rehabilitation most cost-effective. So we wanted to look at the condition of the facility itself. What kind of condition is it? Could we reuse it? Do we need to be structural repairs? Is it falling apart and we need to completely replace it? No, we found out it was in really good shape, actually. All the, uh, rough restraints around it, both the intake and the discharge are, are, are good as well. It's sufficient. So most of the external stuff is good and really you just need to do, to replace the internal, which will save you a lot of money. So the money you spend upfront to do this preliminary stuff is, is, you're, you're gonna see it tenfold in the back end, for sure, by, by being able to just reuse what's in, or just replace what's on the inside.
You are also going to select or recommend the brand name and type of valve for replacement?
We are gonna bring in multiple vendors to discuss with Patrick and his staff, um, the capabilities, the nuances, the pluses and minuses of their valve, how they're operated. Really, all the valves can do the work, okay? It's the relationship that you have with the vendor, how well they maintain them, how well, when you call them and say, hey, we have an issue, they come out and see you and, and, and work with you. That's really what we want to get out of the center. Most of the valves are pretty good. They can do the work. There's also the, um, what size. So some vendors say just replace them in kind. These new diaphragm valves, they have such a wide range of, of, uh, operation that you can use them. However, when you have a large valve, sometimes they're inefficient. So some vendors say you should have one large and one small, so that during low-demand periods, the small one can operate because the flows aren't that high. And when flows come up, they'll switch over to the bigger one. So we want to have that conversation with them as well, because they are, again, they make the same valve and they're, and they're, and they're recommending different things. We want to hear why.
Are you, do you have some, sorry, do you have some money in here to do benchmarking of valves at other municipalities' systems?
Yes, part of the plan is to go visit, so Plymouth, city of Plymouth has one brand, Canton has one brand, um, and some other communities that have a different brand. We're gonna go see all three of those, talk with their operators, see how they like the valve, go down in their pits and see how they operate, see how they maintain them. Um, there's certain characteristics about this Northville Road PRV station. They get a lot of written sediment in it. So being able to strain that out is a huge thing, as Patrick had mentioned. They're going there every day. That's man-hours, every day that you're spending on one station or one asset in your town, but you have a lot of them. So being able to not have them, have to go there every single day will save you in other areas, too.
What is the design life you're going to seek?
Typically, for a valve, it's anywhere from 20 to 30 years. Well, in fact, you've got 50-plus years out of these valves. It's, it's great. Uh, as Ted said, Golden Anderson, they, they don't make them here anymore. They're all overseas. Getting parts from them is very difficult. They're very expensive. So that's why we're recommending switching to these diaphragm valves, which are, you know, made, I don't know if they're made in the USA, a lot of them are made in, but their vendors are here. And getting the parts are easier and less expensive. So that's why we recommend to go with the new diaphragm. Plus, the range of flow is better. With the piston types, you need a small and a large, because a large can't handle small flows. Whereas these diaphragm valves, they have a larger range of operation. They can handle low and they can handle high. Just how efficient they are.
Will the diaphragms be serviceable?
Yes.
Since they're made out of rubber, I assume?
Right, right from the top.
So that's, that's a wear item?
It is, but it's, it's rubber, so it doesn't wear that quickly and it's commonplace.
It's something that we could service or we have to hire a special?
That'll be part of the training with the vendor. We get, they will train the staff to maintain them.
Okay.
Now, whether, you know, the problem is sometimes these valves don't need that much maintenance, therefore you train them and then they don't need anything for a couple of years and forget how to. So I guess it's a plus and a minus to that.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Anybody in the audience want to know about the fascinating world of PRVs? Yeah, I, I think he's got the answers, if you want to know.
I thought we were told not to use acronyms anymore.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
So PRV stands for what?
Pressure Reducing Valve.
Pressure Reducing Valve, there you go. Okay, assuming no more questions, I will entertain a motion.
You want one? All right. Let me find it here, all right. I move to approve the attached proposal from HRC for an amount not to exceed $34,000 for design engineering services for the rehabilitation of the Northville Road PRV station.
Motion's made by Trustee Kermy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorba. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Dorchavitz. Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. I think we're all set. Well, Patrick, you might want to stick around for this next one, but, uh, item F7 is the annual 2020-2021 water and sewer usage rates. Mr. Clinton.
Bob, could you move up a couple slides, please, just for the, get that?
Which, uh, up or?
In the other direction.
Oh, my other up.
Your other up, yeah. This thing right here, thank you. Normally, we would be having this discussion in the June timeframe because the Great Lakes Water Authority, I was going to say GLWA, but Jack doesn't like acronyms. So the Great Lakes Water Authority, um, usually increases their rates on an annual basis on July 1st. This year, because of COVID, they delayed that increase cycle until now, which is October 1st. So October 1st of this year, Great Lakes Water Authority is going to be raising our rates by 7.1%, which is a significant increase. We have not raised our rates since July of 2017. We've been able, even though GLWA has been raising our rates on an annual basis and this one is actually the highest of the past few years, we've been able to maintain our rates at existing levels because we've been getting cost benefits from the sewer side of the equation. Wautua moved off the Wayne County system and moved over to Yucca and we had some bond debt that dropped off, so we've been able to achieve savings on the sewer side, even though the water side was increasing. So we haven't increased rates in three years. Those benefits that we see on the sewer side are now fully depleted. We've received all of the benefits of the bonds. We've received the benefits of moving over to Yucca. So now we are seeing increased costs, both on the water side and on the sewer side. Uh, so I, I can go through all of the detail and the analysis if you'd like, but the bottom line is, it's my suggestion and recommendation that we increase water and sewer rates effective October 1st by 4%. That will have the impact for... That will have the impact for the average resident's water bill, it will increase their water bill by two point eight percent, or twenty-six dollars per year.
What do you assume the, the average usage is?
Uh, Bob, if you can, if you can scroll up for? Yeah, keep going, I think like three or four more slides. Keep going. Keep going.
More?
Yeah. There's one that's coming up that's, like, shows, there you go, right there. So this, this slide shows you the average cost per resident per year, um, in terms of, you know, water and sewer, solid waste, et cetera. It's roughly, and, and I don't have it on this, Chuck, but it's roughly fifteen thousand gallons per quarter, the average usage.
How are we doing this year on usage? Are we above the average? Because of the summer, or below the average?
Uh, it started out slow, but the last couple of months, the usage has been increasing. Obviously, it's been hot and muggy and not a lot of rain.
Do you think COVIDs have anything to do with that, given the fact that more people are home?
Watering their lungs?
No.
They still took a shower.
Well, no, he's right, he's right.
Washing their hands more.
You still take a shower every day?
Well, I think there was a notice.
I think they're looking out at their grass and saying, oh, my grass needs more water.
There was a notice on the bill that said, your bill may be higher because of COVID. I saw it. You know, at the bottom?
On our bill?
What, what did you say?
On our water bill?
Yeah, because people are home, think about it, you have four people at home that normally would be gone for eight or ten hours.
I agree.
Plushing toilets when they would be washing the company's toilets.
Yeah.
Right?
There you go. Okay, any other questions from the board? Anybody in the public? Alrighty then, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Clinton, you want to do that?
Yes. I move to approve resolution twenty twenty dash zero eight dash two five dash eight one, which, effective October first, two thousand twenty, increases the water rate from five dollars and sixty cents to five dollars and eighty-two cents, and the sewage disposal rate from four dollars and sixty cents to four dollars and seventy-nine cents per thousand gallons of water.
Motion's made by Treasurer Clinton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Hytman, Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
They're not in there.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Trustee Hytman?
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Treasurer, uh, Trustee, uh, Kermey?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next is item F, F eight, this is the resolution regarding Salem Springs. Salem Springs has been with us for many years, it predates most of our entry onto the board, but it's, uh, it's a project that has, um, given us a great deal of heartburn over the years. Um, I don't want to get into great detail about the history of it, but, uh, there is a lot of work going on there right now. Uh, the developers are installing a water main around the, the southern portion of the pro, of this project, which is both south of M fourteen and north of M fourteen. Uh, but the southern part is obviously the part that we're most concerned with tonight. A water main has, is under construction along Napier, uh, south to, um, to Joy, and then westward to Godfordsen, and then north on Godfordsen, to a point roughly near M fourteen. Uh, back in twenty seventeen, the developers, uh, working through the township of Salem, were able to tap into the Great Lakes Water Authority water line, which extends along Joy Road, begins somewhere in Dearborn, East Dearborn, and it goes all the way along, uh, Joy Road, servicing all of the communities along that way. Um, and they have, Salem Township has every right to tap into that water line, as we did at one point many years ago. Um, so there was not a whole lot we could do about the water main extension. Patrick Felrath and I attended the meeting where the Great Lakes Water Authority considered the entry of Salem Township into the system. That was approved by the Water Authority, and they assured us, uh, in writing and verbally, that, that it would never impact our water pressure in any way. Uh, and they've made the same promises to Canton Township, Westland, and everybody else who's upstream of us. Um, if there's ever a project here, they would also have to construct a water tower as part of their, um, as part of their water service for this area. The issue still remains, though, with respect to the sewer line. A ten and a half mile sewer line is the current plan for the developer's, uh, project, where they would have to, uh, drill a sewer line all the way through Superior Township and part of Ypsilanti Township, in order to hook up to the, the Yucca facility, the, the Ypsilanti Community's Utility Authority wastewater plant, which is what we utilize as well. Uh, Watuah, the, the Western Township's Utilities Authority, uh, is our sewer system, but it is, it's a transfer system for the most part. It, it moves, uh, sewage to the, to the Yucca facility, and it does some treatment, but it, it, uh, the bulk of the treatment is done, uh, at the Ypsilanti facility. This is where, where Salem would like to hook up. We can go off and talk about the history of this project, and whether or not they, they intended to ever hook up into the Watuah system or not. I, I'll leave that for another, another day and another, another debate. What we do know right now, though, is that Superior Township has yet to review the, um, the sewer plan, because Salem has refused to post security, uh, for the professional review. In the meantime, Superior Township has now been sued by the developer in the Washtenaw County Circuit Court, uh, basically alleging that they have, that they're dragging their feet, and they are not, uh, complying with this, uh, good faith attempt by the developer, in their opinion, to, uh, develop and, and build this sewer line. So, in light of the fact that we have been getting a lot of, uh, inquiry by the residents, mostly in the country called Village Area, but, um, all of our residents who live along Napier, uh, they, they are, you know, obviously very concerned about this project, and the attached resolution would reiterate our opposition to the Salem Springs project, given these most recent developments, and basically, show our support for Superior Township in their effort to, uh, to oppose the construction of the sewer line. This resolution would be given to Superior Township, Salem, um, virtually all of the representatives, uh, who cover this area, and also to Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners. Washtenaw County is organized different than Wayne County, they do not have a strong CEO form of government. They have a, a county administrator, and really, it's their, it's their county commission that, that really has the power in that, in that county. And I, I'm not quite sure if they really all appreciate what's going on here at Salem Springs. And, and I think if the more that they, the more that they understand this project, uh, and, and its, uh, its drawbacks, uh, maybe they, we will be able to solicit some more support from them. To add insult to injury, this is the same project which has received twenty million dollars in grants from the state of Michigan. Uh, this is a zero interest giveaway. It's a, it's a flat out grant that's been given to Salem Township, but with the understanding that the money goes to this particular developer for this project. And Salem, um, depending on who you want to talk to, they've opposed this project in, in the past. They have been sued at least twice, that I'm aware of, by the developer. Uh, so they've really, uh, they, they've pretty much been forced into compliance at this point, uh, and to, and to serve the developer's wishes. So I think it's just important for us to show our support to Superior Township, and also to demonstrate to our residents that we are, uh, we're aware of what's going on, and that we are using our best efforts legally to, um, to hopefully move it into a different direction.
So Superior, you said, has, has not reviewed the, the engineering. Are they opposing the project, or are they just not moving on it?
They, through, through our communications with their supervisor, and also public comments that he has made in their township newsletter, and, and to, and to members of the media, uh, it is clear to me that Superior Township opposes the project. Now, whether this is just being used as a, a straw man to, uh, is really, it's part of their legal strategy, and obviously, they are being sued now as a result. So, um, uh, I, I think that we need to draw attention to that, and again, to, to show our support.
What's the proposed route through Superior Township?
Well, it's, uh, the straightest route possible, and I don't know exactly what road they're looking at. I don't know if, I don't think it's Napier, I think it's a road, whatever the next logical road would be to the, to the west, which would probably be Godfordsen.
Yeah.
So, and that road, you know, Superior Township, I, for the most part, is not, has no sewer systems at all. They're all on septics, and so they're very worried that any sewer line that cuts right through their community is going to now then be a, a tap in for future development, which goes against their, their master plan and their, their vision for their community.
Do we know the status of the second ten million dollars that had been allegedly held up by the governor?
I had been told that it had been held up by the governor, but that was pre-COVID, so I don't know if that has been released, or if that is still being held up. I've, I've made some inquiries, but I've not been able to get a, a straight answer on that. Perhaps our legislators could find out.
Clearly, it would seem that, um, that's information that could be disclosed by DTMB.
I, I would think so.
Or the governor's office.
Yep.
The other thought I had about this resolution is either to put on the record here or in the resolution, the fact that, um, when we were running in two thousand sixteen, this was a hot topic, especially in the western end of the township, and there was universal opposition to this by anybody who talked about it, in, in terms of residents. So I wondered if you wanted to include in the resolution, or just to state publicly, that really what this does is it expresses, um, a viewpoint held by the, the residents, the citizens of the township, that were, were echoing in a way. So that this is not just our seven individual viewpoints, assuming we all voted for it, but it's definitely the public, um, consensus that I've heard for four years now.
It, it could be my, I mean, we are obviously the representatives of the public, so we would be the, the proper body to, to express our, um, our disappointment. But, I mean, I could certainly, I could certainly.
I've gotten calls and emails from people, what the hell are you guys doing? You know, why, why are we letting this thing happen on the corner? Well, okay, it's not us, by the way, and it's, you know.
Just, just to answer that question about the corner, what, what's happening right now at the northwest corner of Napier and Joy is the construction of a pump station for the water, for the water service. So, I mean, they are moving, definitely moving forward on that. They need sewer, and right now, we have, we, the Watuah communities have consistently denied that, at least over the last four years, and so now they've moved on to Plan B, which is drilling through Superior Township.
Go to the corner.
What are you looking at there? That's not it, no.
Joy ends here, this is Napier.
Yeah, so Joy and Napier, so that right?
So that's the corner there.
That's the corner right there, right now. If you drive out there right now, they're built, they've cleared the land, and they're, right here. And they're building a, a pump station.
And, I guess just to be clear, Kirk, Salem Township did not request these, this twenty million dollars, correct? It was? You don't know?
Depends on who you talk to. Um, I, I think that the Bridge Magazine in particular, if you Google that, they will, uh, you can read the, they've, they've put out a pretty detailed story about where the money came from, and who asked for it, and why. And, uh, it was included in, um, it was an earmark in both the twenty seventeen budget and the twenty eighteen budget for the state.
Well, yeah, I did read that, and as I recall, initially, there was, uh, uh, it was an orphan earmark. No one would own up to
Right.
having requested it. And then finally,
Right.
it was admitted to have been put in the budget bill, the, the supplemental lame duck by a legislator from West Michigan. Am I correct about that?
Yes, correct.
So it was not a local legislator, it was not a local public official that we're aware of, that we can prove asked for it. It was someone from well outside this jurisdiction, this community, this area. And fundamentally, that's a problem, if you believe in democracy, in grassroots democracy, that, uh, something like this would happen.
Kirk, have we heard anything from Canton, since Canton is right across the street, right there?
I, I really have not reached out to them yet on the water issue, because we knew it would, we knew that they had been pre-approved for that. Um, and I can, I'll reach out to them after tonight, and now that we have something in hand that we can, uh, that we can show them, maybe they'll, maybe they would adopt something similar.
Refresh my memory where they're getting their water from?
There is a water main that runs along Joy Road. It goes all the way to, uh, East Dearborn.
And it ends at Napier? Doesn't it end at Napier?
Yeah. Well, yeah, right now it does.
Yeah, so they're gonna extend on the?
That pump station, that pump station is gonna grab the water and shoot it up into the other elements of the development. But that Joy Road pump station goes all the way to East Dearborn and Tyreman. There's a huge, uh, old Detroit water and sewer facility out there.
So they've cleared probably fifteen, twenty feet all the way from that corner, Napier, down Ann Arbor Road, both on Ann Arbor Road and Joy, both places. So there's just tons of activity already going on.
Yeah, on, on the Salem side.
On the Salem side, yeah, correct.
We are not assisting in any way that I am aware of, and we've, anyway, we're not. The other thing, too, about the Salem Springs project is, we hear different ideas about what they want to do, and, you know, the, the plan that is still on the books for the, our portion, south of M fourteen, is still largely a residential development. And it's, it's totally inconsistent with the master plan for Salem Township. Salem does not have police, they, they have a volunteer fire department, they don't have a DPW. They don't have any of the, the infrastructure that we have, or Canton, or, or Northville has. And it's, uh, it's just ill, ill conceived, and, uh, I, you know, I, I certainly, I, I certainly don't want to have Salem come to us someday and say, well, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll pay you guys to provide all of these services for us.
What's that statute called again, where you capture?
Annexation, or, oh, um, no, what you're thinking of is, um,
You capture the tax revenue, and then you, for that area, and then you provide the service?
Yeah, yeah, darn, I, I.
Well, that was proposed by
Yeah.
at one time.
Yeah. It's not annexation, but it's basically where you have, you have a contract with a neighboring community to provide them with all the services, and you basically get paid a portion of their property taxes to do it. It just, it escapes my mind right now.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think that was almost on the agenda in two thousand sixteen, if I remember right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Bob torpedoed it. Well, last, the last, uh, Salem Springs option they had on the table would have put that cluster housing option that we approved tonight, it would have just made that look like a luxurious area.
Oh, they were gonna jam four hundred house?
Yeah, they're gonna put as many houses as possible in that little corner.
Yeah.
And that was the last thing we had seen from the Salem.
Which little corner?
The Napier, uh,
Bound by the freeway?
Yeah.
This section here, I believe.
Right.
Oh, just that.
Hundreds of homes.
Hundreds. Condos and the whole nine yards. Yeah, and it was, and they were not luxury condos.
Well, they wanted to attract people who work in Ann Arbor.
Lower taxes.
The lower taxes.
You're watching, not Wayne.
Salem does not have any local tax, it's paid for by the garbage dump.
Right.
It's true.
So they'd be able to out-compete the surrounding communities, because the taxes would be very low. And you get a new house. In a good location.
And you're still in the Plymouth Canton School District, too.
That's true.
Okay, so that was my soliloquy, any questions from the audience? Sure, I would. Uh, hold on. Very well, I move to adopt the attached resolution regarding the township's opposition to the Salem Springs project in Salem Township, Michigan. to the Salem Springs Project in Salem Township, Michigan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Borba. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Clerk Borba, yes. Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Supervisor Heising?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is item F nine. This is non-union employee salary adjustments. We're requesting a budget adjustment and appropriation of no more than, I think this number has changed, or no?
No, because I had some.
This number has not changed.
Yeah.
So it's $28,700 for salary benefit adjustments for our non-union employees, and more than $9,000 for benefits for an election clerk employee. We have cleared this with our finance director, Ginger Moriarty. This is also a retroactive to January first of this year, and I'll entertain any questions that you may have.
Tell me about the $9,000 in benefits for the election clerk. Do we have somebody who's a new hire or somebody that was previously not receiving benefits now wants to have benefits?
No, no, this is a, a combination of when we changed the position from just an administrative position to an election specialist, and then we hired that person, replaced Paula when she moved over.
Is Paula the person?
Paula was the person, yes, but now she's the deputy clerk, and this is to, to cover that benefits and, and the change and any kind of FICA for the part-time person, too.
Okay, so it's not new, one position.
Pardon?
It's a not-new position.
It's not a new position. It was, it was cha, the, the title was changed, and we added a part-time person, and that was really a year and a half ago.
I'm still confused, is the, the benefits now are for a full-time person?
But that person was always full-time.
Okay.
Okay. And just to clarify, this does not apply to the deputy clerk. It does not apply to the deputy treasurer, and it does not apply to any of us.
None of us.
All right, the retroactive, I'm opposed to that. People typically don't do retroactive, especially in this time with a lot of people getting pay reductions. Can't we just do it starting September one?
Well, it's consistent with how we, we, when we do labor agreements with, with our various labor unions, they, with maybe one or two exceptions, they rarely terminate on the, on the date of their, we rarely have an agreement on the date of the termination of the, of the existing contract. So typically, when, when union contracts are settled, everything goes retroactive to the date of their, of their contract origination. In this case, these are all non-union employees, so I, I think it would be consistent and fair to have a, a similar wage adjustment that would go back to the beginning of the year.
That's where the union contracts all start, was at, at, at the beginning of the year, all the union contracts were renegotiated and all of their pay started.
Remember, for several years, retro pay was not allowed by the state of Michigan, and then it was lifted for, I think, police and fire.
I think the timing for this is very, is very bad, given the current situation we're in. I know so many people that are, you know, that are seeing salary reductions, benefit reductions.
Well, and, and again, that's a fair statement. I'm not gonna quibble with that. I, I do know that our department heads have, they have, none of them, like all of our employees, none of them have been laid off. All of them were here virtually every day during the COVID crisis at my request. We all, we all took our proper precautions, but everybody came to work, everybody was a, was extremely diligent and, and dedicated to, to providing a high level of public service under very, very difficult conditions.
No question about that, no, no argument.
And, and so we, we both have valid points, and I, I certainly respect your.
Plus, we had two very successful elections that we, that these people have busted their butts and worked on, you know.
And they were classified essential. I mean, you had the people in the accounting department.
Oh, yeah.
Are classified essential. They're the ones who did the, the audits and, and got all that done on time and done very well, so they were, they were here working.
And this also includes our police and fire chief as well, and their, their leadership has all received raises this year, including the two, our, our two lieutenants, all of the, all of the senior staff in the fire department as well, so.
Now, will you take a friendly amendment to make it September one?
You can make an amendment if there, if you can get support.
All right. I move that we amend this proposal to begin September one, deleting the retroactivity.
Okay, so the motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So the motion on the table is to adopt this resolution but make it effective September first. Any discussion? Hearing none, then Mr. Clerk, take the roll.
Clerk Borba, no. Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
No.
Trustee Heitman?
No.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yeah.
Trustee Dempsey?
No.
Supervisor Heising?
No.
Amendment fails.
Okay. So we're gonna move on, then. Any other questions regarding the original proposed motion? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adopt.
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Clerk?
I move that the Plymouth Township Board of Trustees hereby adopt Resolution 2020-08-25-83, authorizing the finance director to appropriate the fund balance, amending the 2020 general fund and water and sewer budgets in the attached wage and benefits expenditures accounts in the amount of $37,700.
Motion's been made by Clerk Borba. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, second by Trustee Heitman. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Supervisor Heising?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
No.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
No.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
No.
Clerk Borba? Yes. Motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, next up, hold on, let me get my agenda here, is, it's either public comment or board comments. It's public comment.
Public comment.
We have two members of the public left. Anybody want to comment on anything? Okay, thanks for being here tonight. Uh, all right, board comments. Uh, our next meeting will be September, what was that? Was that the thing? That wasn't lightning, though. Oh, uh, will be September eighth. It's a fairly busy meeting. We have a very, several different items that will be on the agenda. Nothing totally controversial, but we are working on the budget right now. The twenty, we are gonna do a two-year budget, finally. We're gonna have a, a presentation by Ginger Moriarty, our, our finance director, who will just briefly give us an update on where we are with the budget. By September eighth, you will have received a draft budget, which is required by law, and Ginger and I have been working on that with all of our department heads. We'll have that for you on or before September first. That draft budget will also be included in the September eighth agenda for the public's perusal, and then we will, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll basically kick off the budget process with an aim towards approving the budget at our final budget, and we'll have budget hearings throughout the months of September and October, and then we'll have final budget approval on November 10th. So that's all I really have right now. Everything else is moving along. Anybody have any questions for me? No?
Is the city planning a shred day with us in the fall?
Yes, the city and township have historically been doing a shred day. We did the last one a couple of months ago. The next one will be in the city, more than likely at the cultural center. They're doing a lot of road work right now on Farmer Street and around the cultural center, but we're looking at mid, mid-October.
Good, that plays into.
And we're hoping, and we're hoping to do a household hazardous waste day on October third.
Well, that's not definite yet.
Oh, it's getting very definite now. I, I can't guarantee 100%, but the vendor who's been doing the household hazardous waste day for us is doing it, has been doing it consistently now for other communities, and they feel pretty confident that unless there is some unexpected COVID outbreak or new regulations, that they feel like they, they'll be able to provide it. It'll be at Troy Design as well.
Good.
Good location. Okay, anybody else, then? Jerry?
I'm good.
You're good? All right, Bob?
No good here.
Gary?
Yeah, let's talk here, let's talk saving some money. The last three weeks, pretty much, I've been to the township park pretty much every day. See all the great new signs we have out there, no dogs, no parking. Well, I've seen four dogs in the last three weeks. I've seen geese all over, making a huge mess on, on the walking trail. I've seen people parking on the grass with all these great new signs. I was told we've never once given a ticket nor towed a car, so don't worry about those brand-new signs that say you will be ticketed or your car will be towed. So let's stop buying the new signs. We can save a lot of money there. And the, the last thing very disconcerting to me was our employees that work at the park are not required to wear masks when they're talking to the public. I brought that up to the park superintendent and was basically told, "Don't start any trouble where there isn't any," and, you know, no, no, yeah, knowing me, I just want to start trouble where there isn't any. I'm very concerned about the people not wearing a mask when they're talking to the public.
Well, I will certainly bring that up with him, and we'll let them know. They should have masks, especially when they're dealing with the public. Otherwise, as long as they're outside and six feet away, that's fine.
Yeah, we don't care, but when they're talking, and some of the people they talk to were not wearing masks, which made it even worse.
Okay.
And the kid basically blew me off and said, "Who the hell are you?", so that made me even madder, so just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Well, in that vein, with geese and ducks, which are really creating some mess, we may want to add something in the budget for geese and duck control next spring. We've done it in the past.
Yeah.
There are processes to do that.
There's, uh, there's rockets that can be fired off. You know, I'm on the Metro Parks Commission.
No, they're experts at that.
They actually hire a company, a man who has dogs. They're very, they're, they're not mean dogs at all. They're just very happy and curious, and they love geese, and they love to chase geese.
Chase them.
And.
Wow.
That's the problem, there's no dog, service dogs only, professional dogs.
You know, that, that park is used a lot, and I am very, very happy that our residents and many other residents in the area are using it, and, you know, kids are out there, and it's, it's really nice, and I want to make sure they get that experience all the time.
Well, geese management has always been a challenge for all of us.
I like, I like your idea, Chuck.
But there are many different solutions out there. You know, we've also talked with some of our homeowners associations, remember?
Yeah, to get them.
We approved one a couple of months ago for geese management.
Yeah, they were funding, they were doing their own process.
Yeah, but that was, that works. That's Colony Farm, and if you walk over there, there are no geese.
Right.
So maybe we should, we should probably be looking at that strongly. We've done it in the past, but I know there is one flock of ducks, they're mallards, and they really work that pavilion that's the first one on the left with the fireplace.
Yep.
And it's kind of a really big mess in the, on the concrete.
Well, we shouldn't be feeding them either.
Well, no, what they're doing is they, they're trained that when they know that people eat there, when the people are done eating, they actually come in and clean the place up.
Yeah.
It's incredible.
The squirrels there are also ridiculously friendly. They'll eat right out of your hand.
Oh, God.
So, all set?
Yep, thanks.
Jack Dempsey? You pass?
I'm done.
You're done.
I'm good.
You're good? Okay, then, hearing no objections, I need a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Supervisor, I move we adjourn at 9:04 PM.
Mr. Heitman has motioned to adjourn at 9:04 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Borba. All those in favor of adjournment, sing pop.
Aye.
Aye, aye, we are adjourned.